We're back to main motion, Article One, okay? We're now back to discussion on Article One. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of Article One, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, signify by saying no.
No.
The motion has passed at 11:22.
Well, ten people have to stand, you know how it works. Yep, you have to have seven people stand. I think seven people have stood. Why not do a hand count and just alleviate the problem?
All right, I will call my tellers down, please. Okay, apparently there are people who think that I don't hear well, so could I have my tellers computer, please?
No, fifty.
This is a majority.
This is just a majority.
Right.
Okay.
Right, just fifty plus one.
So fifty-one percent.
Oh, no, fifty percent plus one.
Oh, okay.
And I think, again, what people don't understand is they're gonna... Yeah, oh yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, again, we're voting on Article Number One. All those that are in favor of Article Number One, please raise your right hand. Once the counter has passed through all, you may then put your hand down. Thank you. Okay. Yeah. Hang on now, we'll hang on one minute. Okay, all those who are opposed to this motion, please raise your right hand. And you may lower them after the counters have gone by.
I don't want to spill your drink. Did he call for the article?
They're still counting the nose.
Oh, that's ten.
Oh.
The motion has passed two hundred and twenty-four to forty-nine. Thank you. At ten twenty-nine, eleven twenty-nine PM, rather.
So he'll call for it.
Yes.
I just can't tell if I... You can hear me, but people would complain, right?
Is there a second to that?
So we have to say...
Okay, could I have it written, Virginia, please? Virginia has presented me with a motion. I have been presented with a motion to reconsider Article One, and it has been seconded. Okay, is there any discussion? If there is any... Mr. Hamilton.
Yeah, we got the second. Just very quickly, I guess, the reason, I'm glad she's doing the second motion, so we can say something to the leadership of this town. After this vote only means it gets through today. We still gotta go to the ballot later on. I'm sorry, my name's Sean Hamilton, five thirty-eight Berry Road. Sorry about that. I guess my question going for the second vote on this article would be, you know, before we go to the ballots on this thing, this gives you permission to bring it forward to us again, is perhaps we can get the answers on how come the budget was off five hundred and five thousand? Who raised the tax levy? Where is the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that Mr. Dennis has been asking about for the last five months? I mean, for us to give you the confidence to go forward with this town, give you the funds you need to run it, I think we deserve some answers. You've been asking, "No, there's no pros, that's not what I'm here for." So I guess for the next few months or till we have that vote, if you could please get those answers, it might make it a little easier at the ballot box. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dury, just correct yourself to the question.
Yeah, well, again, there are other considerations that have to be considered here that are not being talked about, which is the light and water, interest...
Oh, well, out of order. That's okay, okay. Just, I wanna move the...
Properties that is owned.
Oh. That's enough. Yeah, that's not a part of reconsidering of the motion. Thank you, Mr. Dury. If you please take your seat. Okay, I'm gonna call for a vote on reconsideration. All those in favor of reconsidering this article, please signify by saying yes. All those opposed? The motion is not reconsidered, and it has been defeated at eleven thirty-two. Thank you.
Oh, it was Mr....
That's good, they can't do that. I took care of that issue. Article Two, please.
Move that the fiscal year 2014 appropriations voted by the town pursuant to Article Nine, Town Budget, or Article Eleven, Firefighter's EMT, at the May fourteenth, 2013 Annual Town Meeting, be amended by increasing appropriations as follows. Twenty-six thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine be appropriated to fund deficit for FY 2013, and to meet this appropriation, twenty-six thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine be transferred from the town's stabilization fund.
Second.
Okay, is there discussion on this motion? Seen no discussion at...
Just to explain what the purpose of this is. The purpose of this is to, so we've dealt with kind of the fiscal year fourteen problem. This is to transfer money to resolve our fiscal year thirteen, our negative free cash. So we're transferring this money from stabilization to close out basically fiscal year thirteen as required by law, so that's...
Thank you, okay. Seen no further discussion. All those in favor of this motion, this is a two-thirds motion, signify by saying yes. Opposed? Motion passes at eleven thirty-four. By two-thirds. Article Three, please.
Mr. Moderator, no motion on Article Three.
Article Four, please.
Mr. Moderator, no motion on Article Four.
Do you wanna read Article Five?
Article Five.
Article Five. Move that three million five hundred thousand dollars debt authorized by vote of the Narragansett Regional School District on March fifth, 2014, to pay the costs of, one, replacing the existing oil-fired boiler, serving the high and middle schools with a wood-fired boiler, a wood-chip-fired boiler, to be located in the existing boiler room. Two, construction of a wood-chip storage facility to be located adjacent to the boiler room. And three, of all other costs incidental and related thereto, be hereby approved, provided, however, that this vote shall not take effect and shall operate as a disapproval thereof unless or until the town votes by ballot to exempt the principal and interest payments allocated to the town of Templeton from the elimination of taxes contained in Mass. General Law, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Twenty-One C, K, Proposition Two and a Half, so-called.
Second.
Mr. Moderator. John? Yes?
I would like to ask that the town meeting be allowed to hear Tim Singleton and Frank Kennedy from the project managers for this project?
Advisory Board? The advisory board, after reviewing at the pre-town meeting on this particular item as a debt exclusion, votes unanimously? No. Okay, now, back to your question, do you wish, is it, do people allow somebody to speak on this article, please?
You need to make a substitute motion.
Please? Thank you, yes, John, go ahead, we're gonna do it.
Mr. Moderator, could I make a substitute motion?
Go ahead.
I move that the three million five hundred thousand dollars debt authorized by a vote of the Narragansett Regional School District on March five, 2014, to pay the cost of replacing the existing oil burners serving the middle and high school with wood-chip-fired boiler to be located in the existing boiler room, construction of a wood-chip facility to be located adjacent to the boiler room, and all of the costs incidental and related to this project be hereby approved.
Where is it?
All right, so what I'm understanding then is that you are then eliminating the wording, "Provided, however, that this vote shall not take effect and shall operate as a disapproval thereof unless and until the town votes by ballot to exempt the principal and interest payments allocated to the town of Templeton for the limitation on taxes contained in General Law's Chapter Fifty-Nine, Section Twenty-One C, Subsection K, Proposition Two and a Half, so-called." Is that what that substitute motion is about? You're eliminating that wording?
Yes.
Okay. There's a substitute motion to, we can discuss a substitute motion to eliminate this wording. Is there any discussion on this, why we want to eliminate this wording?
I would ask that you have the superintendent speak on that?
Yeah, if she wants to address why we want to eliminate this wording, that's fine.
Thank you. I think you need to understand that we are not asking for a debt exclusion or an override. It is not impacting your taxes. We are only asking, as a school committee, for you to approve the borrowing. It does not mean that it has to go to a ballot. If you listen to the project, feel that it's a good project, then your vote here today on this substitute motion is to allow the school committee of Narragansett Regional School District to go out and borrow the money necessary for the project. That's why it does not need a ballot vote in any way, so, and, that language that I had presented, the first article, was written by bond counsel, and bond counsel is the one that determines the language necessary for us to be able to borrow. So that's why we took that piece out. Is that clear?
All those in favor, yeah. Yes, Mr. Dury?
I'd like to know who pays the Narragansett bills. I thought we all paid Narragansett's bills, and making a point of that, I'd like to also comment on...
Town of Templeton pays a portion of the bills, and the state pays a portion of the bills. Thank you very much, Mr. Dury.
Well, that may increase us.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello?
Yeah.
I don't see how we can consider...
Who are you again?
I'm sorry.
Who are you again, please?
I'm sorry, my name is Dave Shepard, I live at ten B Musket Drive in Templeton.
Thank you.
I don't see how we can consider borrowing anything which would partially, you said the state pays part and Templeton pays part, which is the taxpayers. How on earth can we borrow anything when we can't afford what we have?
Okay, thank you.
I don't understand that, I'm confused.
Okay, all those in favor of the substitute motion, please signify by saying yes. All those opposed? The substitute motion is in place now. We have had a request for some speakers on the presentation of Article Five. Is that still in fact a request? Okay, so go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator.
Let's start the presentation then, please.
It's the project managers who can shed a lot of light on some of these questions. Thank you. We have Mr. Frank Kennedy and Mr. Tim Singleton.
Good morning. My name is Frank Kennedy. I'm a project manager with the firm of Diversified Project Management. My colleague, Tim Singleton, is here as well. We just have a few minutes. For those that haven't maybe caught the presentation that was done at community meetings, we'll just do a very quick, if I can figure out the controls, a very quick discussion of the project. Do I, ah, terrific. So, what we hope to accomplish is answer the question, why would you borrow at a time like this? And hopefully, what we leave you with is an understanding that this is a very prudent move. Right now, the school is heated with heating fuel. This is a diagram that shows since 1999, the peak prices that have been paid, and the present on the far right being the most recent, nearly four dollars per gallon, where back in 1999, we were just a dollar fifty. And of course, everyone's projecting the cost of fossil fuels to increase. So just so that you know, this isn't a quick, one-time thought. This is a process that has been going on for five years, facing the imminent end of useful life of existing boiler equipment that's in the facility. And so, five years have gone into evaluation and study, including a professional feasibility study that was performed by a firm that does hundreds of wood-chip-fired boiler facilities. And on top of that, an energy audit was accomplished to confirm the accuracy of the information by the design team. And two out of three grants for funding has been approved for the project. One is, it hasn't been unapproved, it's not approved as yet. If you don't know what a wood chip is, what we're talking about is a whole chip. This is a waste product from trees. It is highly renewable, it's in Templeton, it's everywhere, right? This is, this is waste material for landscapers. This is the byproduct of clearing. This is in abundance. It's sustainable. You obviously have, right within the local community, an abundance of this material, so it's locally sourced, it's available in abundance, and I don't know if you can read the last, but historically, it has been very stable and low cost as a source. In fact, by converting to wood chips, the annual fuel cost will drop by nearly ninety percent. That's the incentive to convert, to take on a little bit of debt, so that every year, the payment in energy is substantially reduced. The project has some unique characteristics. It needs a fuel storage facility, so in the description you read, there's a building that will actually house three, four days of fuel. Access for deliveries, there is a delivery truck pathway that needs to be provided, and then, inside the existing boiler room, will be new equipment that both moves the fuel and distributes it, a new and unique industrial-grade type boiler. Other equipment, a stack chimney, environmental equipment that monitors and maintains ninety-nine point nine percent filtering, thank you, an ash disposal system. We're talking about several barrels a year of ash, which is recyclable, and some, I can't read my bottom label, operating control system, which is, in that right-hand photo, is a sample of a wood-chip-fired boiler control panel, very simple, very easy, from a Keene, New Hampshire facility that the team has visited. A conceptual diagram for a wood-chip-fired boiler, very similar to this, a stoking system where wood chips are mechanically introduced into a furnace in a fire chamber, it expands to a combustion chamber. Ultimately, piping that's coiled through the heat exchanger circulates through the building, and gases escape out the chimney. An entire plant, this is another schematic, considerable floor area is consumed to distribute the wood chips from their delivery truck, across the floor, through the augers, and into the combustion chamber, and through, through the system. So we need a, we need a building and to modify the boiler room that we have. And the proposal, go ahead. The proposal, I'm sorry, this is kind of small, but you're looking at a site plan for the school building that we're in. And that little red dot represents a building addition that we're proposing to accomplish adjacent to the existing boiler room, which is in the back parking lot. In schematic, we think now, with design having progressed somewhat, this is probably oversized for what we'll actually need, but the end of it would just be a large garage door. So at the top of this elevation is the existing facade, and the bottom, with the large overhead garage door, is the proposed addition. The team that has been studying this for five years have visited many similar facilities. Most recently, they tripped up to Keene Middle School in New Hampshire, very comparable, although even more... although even more severe climate, surrounded by an abundance of wood chips. So that building you see on the right is their boiler room, and the stack you see to the left of it is for the facility. We just have a few more shots. This is their storage. You can see the chips inside the two doors that they have. The distribution system, boiler on the right, very simple. And so here's the equation to the cost-benefit. Using wood chips will cost about $36,000 per year to heat this facility. The actual, if you can see in the table below, in 2013, the actual fuel bill here in oil was $261,000, and that was a mild winter. This year, the projection is close to $350,000. So $36,000 a year chips, $350,000 a year in oil. If you factor in the capital cost, this is why it has no tax impact, for a $3.2 million loan, that's where we are right now with two out of three grants in hand, the loan payment of $214, plus another $36,000 a year for chips, is $250,000 a year total, less than the fuel from last year. If we're successful in getting the third grant, we drop to $234,000 a year, less than, even more less than the fuel experienced just last year. I think that's the end of our show. Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Put your hand down until after the speakers are done. Mr. Shepard, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I ask that quite possibly, we could have a brief Q and A. I want to let you know that we have representatives from the governmental forestry services, a representative locally from DCR, Department of Conservation and Recreation. We have two local foresters who came all the way over from Sterling to speak with us, and there would be great resources for Q and A with those types of questions.
Okay. We can have question and answer service. Someone put the lights back on, like she was going on here. Then, yes, anybody? Okay, one moment, Mr. Shepard, you can ask-
Now, Mr. Shepard, we had a question apparently we wanted to ask. Would you come up and ask your question? Bill, you want to give him the mic so he might be heard by the people, please?
I was wondering the age of the current boiler, since he mentioned it was at the end of its life cycle, and I'd like to know how ash is recycled.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shepard. Good thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Claybod, do you have these answers, or?
Yes, the current two Cleaver Brooks, 9 million input BTU boilers, high-efficiency water-tube boilers are 16 years old. Currently, we plan to replace them because the way they were set up originally was to bring out a thermal value of 150 degrees or greater to provide for constant temperature. What we found out is, one of the main complaints I got was, it's too hot in the building, though. What are you going to do about it? Brought in our control people and said, "Bill, you have to set it up." Even though the boiler's not set up for it, we have to set up a range of comfort levels commensurate to the outdoor boiler reset. So we set it up for 110, 120, 140, 160, and 180 degrees. The colder it is, the hotter the water output we would be putting out. This did come with a consequence to the boilers. When it called for temperatures below 150, we developed condensation, which is acid-laden, which will shorten the life of the boilers. You can see the condensate at the bottom through some of our photographs, and it's not going to be good for the boiler, but we do have building comfort. So the wrong boiler was put in for the sake of value engineering, where you get neither value or much engineering, but it's something we're dealing with, and this project answers that.
Okay, is there somebody else who has a question? Do you?
Hi, Liz Toth, 141 Gray Road. If I may ask three questions?
Sure, go ahead and ask a question.
First question is, what is the return on investment? How long is the loan? And-
Yeah. Okay, the return on the investment, or how long is the loan, number one?
Moderator, could we recognize the superintendent, Ruth Miller, for these questions?
Sure.
Thank you.
The amortization will be 25 years.
Okay.
Okay, so based on that answer, we're, every year, we're actually going to be saving money over the 25 years over what we're currently, what our current costs are. Is that correct? Every year, are we going to be saving money over where we currently are, even with-
Mother of the year, is the?
Yes.
Yes, all right, okay.
Yes. Even if at $4 a gallon, if they stay the same, we'd still be saving money every year. So, no matter what, this is a good thing because that puts more money back with the town and the school. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. I believe Mr. Chardier was there before Ms. Mathie. Mr. Chardier, do you wish to speak, please? I believe he was there before you, Sharon.
Yeah, Richie Chardier, Balden Road. I was just wondering, you're talking about this boiler, what's that generator out there doing? Is that for the school or not?
I don't know. Bill, can you answer that?
Got a big fan and all that.
No, okay. All right, thank you, Richard. Go ahead, Bill.
The 1.65 megawatt turbine is a municipal project creating energy for the town, not a school project and not a thermal project.
Okay, Sharon?
Hi, that's Sharon Nanty, 60 in Nanticoat. I have a question for Mr. Kennedy, I believe his name was. I thought I heard you say that the storage facility only stored three to four days of fuel. That's kind of scary in New England, I think, with all the stores we have. You know, we could run out of wood chips. And what's the backup plan for this? I mean, I understand that it might be propane, and I'd like to know how much propane, and is the propane always running along with the wood storage facility as well?
Okay, thank you, Sharon.
It is about four or five days of on-hand storage capability. The backup plan is a propane system that will be utilized for the shoulder season, so the spring and winter, when the, spring and fall, when the load is very minor. I don't know how many days of propane that actually would calculate to. Is it two or three days? Nominally, nominally. So about a week's worth of fuel is on-site. Now remember, too, the wood chips are only coming from the local community, so we're not relying on a shipment from another state.
Okay. All right, wait a minute. Excuse me one second, sir. Mr. Robinson, did you want to speak on this motion? I've missed you because you're way over there in the corner.
I just want to speak on the motion, but it's not a question.
Okay, it's not a question-answer thing, okay? Let the gentleman ask the question, please. Thank you. Your name and address, please.
Jim Gilbert, Shady Lane, Templeton. I'm just curious, if this is an energy improvement, does it qualify for a performance contract?
Any project where a school may be acting as the deciding agent could use a performance contract. I guess, from my personal and professional view, I would never give up 30% of my energy efficiency to give to a performance contractor, an ESCO, an energy-saving company, to achieve it. We have the capacity to develop it, we have a great team, we do not need an ESCO. Thank you.
Through a performance contract, the loan could be paid off by the energy savings. That's correct. So there would be, in essence, no increase to the residents, and the budget with the school committee would be paying for the loan for this improvement by the energy savings.
Most of that is true, but your energy savings, your energy savings are divided proportionally amongst the contract of the ESCO, of the performance contractor. They will take 30% away. We really don't need to have that to accomplish our goal. They're not doing this for nothing. They do guarantee performance, and if their performance, the energy savings, isn't there, they're responsible for that. But we spend so much time with reputable architects, with reputable engineers, Wilson Engineering out of Meadville, Pennsylvania, we know what we're going to be getting in terms of performance, and ESCO adds a layer of loss for us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Rachel, Sina 33, Dale Drive. I have two questions. One is, I don't think we answered how to recycle ash and what it can be used for. And the second question is, has the school looked into any other means of a boiler heating system, like solar energy or something like that? And what would be the cost effectiveness with the solar energy as opposed to the boiler, this wood chip?
The answer to your first question is for, with regards to the ash, one example that we have familiarity with is Cooley Dickinson Hospital, which even in its critical care facilities, went to multiple wood chip-fired boilers, and they generate probably 40 cubic yards a year. It's actually picked up at the hospital by farmers who use it in their fertilization process. So they don't even have to dispose of it. The supply comes and takes it away. Have other energy, do you want to speak, since it's been a five-year sort of investigation? Here, we'll simply, we'll simply put the ash on the fields. It's harmless, it's full of potash, potassium, it's great for the lawns, and we need it. And it fulfills a sustainability circle. You know, as far as that goes, you asked me what other strategies. I'd like to really focus on one at a time, but anybody knows, a school can only cut its energy portfolio and its thermal portfolio. It's the only way we can change from a facility standpoint. At some point, when it's appropriate, we may be talking a solar project, which is much easier to develop. This one is a great project, but definitely, we want to take the ones that are a little more complicated first.
Yeah, my question is more of, as the studies, he mentions on solar, geothermal, and we have a, Winston, the church in the center there is actually using it, and that is the 21st century. And I don't think anything has been really looked at, and he just said, nothing about geothermal, which gives you free energy after the essential cost. And there actually is some websites on that. So again, we're not being told everything, and everything in this solution to this is to give more time and to make a responsible decision.
Thank you, Mr. Dewey. Paul, I think you wanted to ask a question, did you? Or did you, are we going, yes, this is a question-and-answer session, we'll run it in a second.
Paul Quatroki, 2 Military Drive, Templeton. We're told that the loans for 25 years. How long will the boiler last?
Right, what's the life of the boiler? Yeah, I understand, right.
The life of this boiler project will be between 25 and 30 years. No, nothing beyond 30 years, though, do we anticipate.
So let's say at the end of 30 years, it's going to have to be replaced.
Okay.
Second, you said that, or someone here said that the chips would come from a local area, they won't be shipped in. I think we only have so much chips. I don't think we can last 25 years. I think we have to have some way or some idea where chips are going to come from outside the local area and how much it's going to cost. Has that been considered?
Mr. Moderator, at this point, we anticipated these questions, they're very important. Could we recognize one of our sustainable certified loggers to come up and speak about that?
Sure, that'd be fine.
Thank you, John. Yeah, my name is John Clark from T. Jefferson &amp; Son. We're a Commonwealth Quality Program certified timber harvesting and wood chip producer from Spencer, Mass. I've seen the estimates at about 1,200 tons of wood chips a year. That's something like we would find off a harvest of maybe 30 acres each year. So to me, that's a, it's a very low amount of wood chips when you consider that there's probably 80 loads going per week, to the, 80 loads would be, you know, 400 tons a week, up to Pine Tree Power in Westminster. So I think it's a very low, sustainable amount of wood chips that would go to this project.
So you're talking about 30 acres a year, Paul, is what he said, approximately.
Okay, then, what you're saying is, the wood chips aren't coming from the local area, they're coming from outside the local area as well. I mean, the local area is where we live.
Paul, local area, in my mind's eye, is a 20 to 25-mile radius. Within that radius, there are a lot of loggers who would be able to supply chips. The farther away from the center of Templeton you get, the more your fuel costs go in. So your loggers who are close have a natural advantage due to fuel prices.
That's the question.
So local area, local area is being responsible within a 25-mile radius, Paul. Okay? Yes, do you have a specific question that you want to ask?
Hi, how you doing? Jim Mason. I live at 95 Elm Street in Baldenville. I've got a kind of a question. Are you going to guarantee me a price of $30 a ton for 25 years, considering the cost of oil may go up and it may in fact cost you more money to run your chipper, your skitter, your transportation equipment? You're going to guarantee me $30? As I seen in our projections, we made up a number, we assumed $30. That price is not going to increase. Are you willing to cut a contract with the town of Templeton today? Think it's a $30 price?
Can I address that for a moment, if you don't mind? I believe that there were two references earlier on to this conversation about price, and that was if oil was up, then wood chips would probably be up. I believe it had been stated by two different individuals, so no, obviously, $30 is not going to handle over the next 25 years, is what I heard. This is what I'd like to answer to that question. This gentleman here, he's welcome to answer equally as well, but that's what I heard. Obviously, nothing is going to stay cast in stone forever, and nothing is going to change in price, okay?
I'll let you off the hook on that one, because that's a baited question. So I'll let you off the hook on that one. It's obvious that everything's pertaining to the price of oil, cost of oil. We all guarantee that the price of oil is going to go up. Your cost to run your business is going to go up. Price of oil goes up, employees want to raise, minimum wage goes up, cost of food goes up, everything goes up.
All right. The numbers, we can't really count on. They're a prediction, they're not last in concrete. Have we seen, this is a secondary question, like I said, I'll let you off the hook, an engineering study on this boil oil plant by a engineer who's looked at it and can evaluate it? And tell us, what's it going to cost me as a taxpayer to either remedy the situation we have in place or replace everything because we need all new? Now, there's no one piece of pipe that we can keep-
Now, there's no one piece of pipe that we can keep, I'm sure. You know what I mean? I haven't seen, you haven't given me the data that says this needs to be done. Is there an engineering report I could perhaps look at, which I don't think our advisory committee has seen either? I would like to know.
Thank you, all right, have a good, good day.
Our preliminary feasibility study was performed by Wilson Engineering, they're the, the premier engineering firm out of Meadville, Pennsylvania, in the country. When the USDA Forestry Service needs an, a, an exact bona fide report that we can believe in, that they can believe in, these gentlemen come out to do the job. When we were at Maine, we looked at a chip installation, Tom, the principal, walked right up and said, "I bet your ESP is condensing." The guy says, "Yeah, can you do something about it?" Tom had it fixed in three months. These people are top-flight, we're lucky to have them on our team, so.
The study was done, and it made available.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead and say, go ahead. We made reference in the slideshow that a study by Wilson Engineering was performed, and I think it's available on the school's website. So it's been, it's been posted and available for downloading.
Also, let's talk about scale, because I think the gentleman who's just up here is really had a question of scale. Chips at $30, oil 48 cents, that's the comparison. Chips at $45, oil at 72. Chips might go up to $65, oil a dollar four. That's the scale with thermal value between the two. I can't speak enough about that. I can't do that and not abandon the whole system in the school. This utilizes the hot water base we have in every, every piece of equipment, even in here, which is why we're so comfortable. That's the scale we're talking about, I can't deliver that any other way to you.
Virginia, did you want to say something?
Yes, please. I just have a quick comment. This is not something new, Bill's, Bill and Company have been working on this for a really long time. I sat at a meeting almost two years ago now in, or near Bill's office, when he started this process in motion. And everybody keeps asking, is the school going to do their part? Is the school going to do their part to help with the, you know, the big problem that we have? They're trying to, they're trying to do this to save on fuel. So I think we ought to give them a chance and see what they can do.
Thank you, thank you, Virginia. Okay, Ken, go ahead. I think it's, I'm up for the question and answer, let's get on, we're speaking on the motion, let's, thank you very much, Mr. Claybog. I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, Mr. Kennedy, thank you.
I'll make this quick because I can't even change the oil in my car, so I'm not someone who can really speak to the engineering of this process. But there are some questions that people have asked me. One is, are we going to be cutting down all the trees in Templeton to solve this problem? Remember that the grant that we have to pay this is coming from the, the United States Department of Agriculture Forestry Services. So these are the people that are in charge of taking care of our, the forests in our country, saying that we should switch to this because it's efficient. The next thing that I wanted to reiterate, if you could, would Mr. Claybog, if you could, so even if, or wood chips doubled in price, what would oil have to be for us to get the same thermal?
96 cents.
So if you think that oil will be 96 cents 20 years from now, vote no. I encourage you to vote no if you think that's going to be the case. Okay? I think that's everything I had to say, so thank you very much. Like I said, the school is trying to do its part, this isn't something that's rushed, it was, you know, five-year-plus study that was done, and thank you very much for coming out today.
Okay. Sharon, yeah, go ahead.
Sharon Manti, 16 Manti Court. I have a question. Will we have to hire somebody to watch this, this particular boiler, seeing that, that the storage is only three or four days, as oil is probably a week at least, I would think? If we have to hire someone, well, then we got to think about the added salaries and the pensions in the future.
Thank you. So the system is very easy and very basic, and that's why the diagrams in the picture was used in the, in the presentation. The, the daily maintenance is about an hour a day and can be done by trained staff once the commissioning of the system is, has occurred. So they'll be trained, and with routine maintenance, it's about five hours a week total with the staff, no, no additional staff is required.
Ma'am, you have something?
Well, she's next.
Rachel, Seana 33, Daniel Drive. My question is regarding the solar energy use. If this doesn't pass for the wood chip, will the school look into a solar energy facility or whatnot?
I, I didn't, I didn't actually hear the question myself, what do you, what do you ask?
If this doesn't pass for a vote or whatnot?
Right.
Will the school look into other methods of heat their boiler system, and will they consider a solar panel?
I don't know if I can answer to the school, I'd get the school to give you an answer.
We're not prepared to answer that question at this time.
They're not prepared to answer this question, but could I, could I answer this question, Booth? Is it okay if I, if I could say something, if I might? I don't think, I don't think that, that anybody is beyond stopping to looking to see what they can do to improve things, whether it be through solar, or whether it be through wind power or any other such thing. I believe that we all in the world today will endeavor to try and see what we can do to do it, whether it be wood chips, solar, you know, wind power, or whatever, okay? I think that, I don't think that they would give up, you know, the heating system of the school without looking for other avenues or other alternatives. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Okay. Is that adequate or less of that? Would you continue to look? Is that all I'm asking? Would you maybe continue to look for other means to heat the school, whether it be solar, wind, or what have you? Is that correct or incorrect? Thank you. All right, thank you. Kenny, oh, Sean, I'm sorry, sorry.
Quick response to that, I think a correction should be made. Bill, Bill's mentioned this idea seven and a half years.